Okay, in the absence of Chairman and Vice Chairman being absent tonight, call tonight's meeting to session.
In accordance with the rules of procedure, in the absence of the Chair and the Vice Chair, I make a motion that Sean O'Rourke be elected as Chairman Pro Ten for tonight's meeting.
Second. Second by Kevin Reed. Do we have a vote? Do we need a vote?
Sure.
We do.
Yep, we do.
Can I vote for my all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. With that being said, roll call, everyone is here this evening except the Vice Chair and the Chairman who are not with us this evening.
Both traveling.
Both traveling, yes, both traveling, not sure where Ian is traveling, could be abroad, I'm not sure.
She's in Antarctica, Antarctica, yeah.
Wow, okay.
That's really traveling.
It wasn't cold enough here. It's not a vacation for me.
So much for topping any air stories this year, huh?
Yeah, we'll get them next time.
With the consent calendar, motion to approve the minutes and voting record of the Town Council meeting held on December fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, parentheses, session twenty fifteen dash twenty-two, close parentheses. Do I have a motion?
Consent calendar.
Okay. B, request funds dated January first, two thousand sixteen, total seven thousand three hundred and sixteen point two eight. C, donation of the emergen- excuse me, of the volunteer emergency medical service from a resident in the amount of one hundred dollars. D, donation to the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library in honor of Catherine Riedlinsky in the amount of five hundred dollars. E, donation to Monroe Police Department from Northbrook Condominium Association in the amount of one hundred dollars. F, donations to Project Warmth for various residents and businesses in the amount of fifteen hundred and eighty-five dollars. G, donation to the Friendship Fund for various residents and organizations in the amount of six hundred and fifty dollars. H, donations to the Food Pantry from various residents and organizations in the amount of five thousand six hundred and ninety-eight. Communications. Aye.
Want to approve the consent calendar?
Oh, excuse me. Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Nobody's.
Oh, I so moved. Sorry.
I'll second.
Okay. And if there are any further discussion on the consent calendar from anyone? Seeing no further discussion, can we have vote? All those in favor? All those opposed? So we have, what, seven of the seven, seven to zero? Moving on to communications. A, memo from Mr. Kirk Anderson of WNNR to Town Council dated January fourth, two thousand sixteen regarding WNNR CPR grant for fiscal year two thousand sixteen. B, memo from the Community and Social Services Director to the select- First Selectman dated January fifth, two thousand sixteen regarding a steep grant to renovate the Food Pantry. C, excuse me, C, memo from the Director of Finance to the First Selectman with a copy to the Town Council Chair dated December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen regarding the transfer of funds. D, memo from the Tax Collector to Town Council Chairman dated January first, two thousand sixteen regarding the request for funds totaling seven thousand three hundred and sixteen point two eight. E, memo from the First Selectman to Town Council dated January seventh, two thousand sixteen regarding a donation to the volunteer emergency medical service. F, memo from the First Selectman to Town Council Chairman dated January seventh, two thousand sixteen regarding a donation to the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library. G, memo from the First Selectman to the Town Council Chairman dated January seventh, two thousand sixteen regarding a donation to the Monroe Police Department. H, memo from the First Selectman to Town Council Chairman dated January seventh, two thousand sixteen regarding donations to Project Warmth. I, memo to, memo from the First Selectman to Town Council Chairman dated January seventh, two thousand sixteen regarding donations to, to the Friendship Fund. J, memo from the First Selectman to Town Council dated January seventh, two thousand sixteen regarding donations to the Food Pantry. K, memo from the First Selectman to Town Council Chairman dated January seventh, two thousand sixteen regarding a donation to Web Mountain Discovery Zone. L, memo, memo from the First Selectman to Town Council dated January eighth, two thousand sixteen regarding Parks and Recreation's Fee Schedule. M, memo from First Selectman to Town Council Chairman dated January eighth, two thousand sixteen regarding the steep grant to renovate Food Pantry. N, memo from First Selectman to Town Council Chairman dated January eighth, two thousand sixteen regarding WNNR CPR grant. Public participation, is there anyone in the public that would like to, like to have anything to say? Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Lee Hostler, two seven two Stanley Road. I was always looking at the consent calendar, and noted a number of small amounts of gifts. And I'm not, I'm just, I have nothing against, I'm pleased to see that all, all the money has been given, but I'm not so sure that it's a real function of the legislative body of the town. Seems like you guys have bigger and better things to do than talk about a hundred dollars or a couple hundred dollars. But you get more than that, I understand, maybe five hundred, a thousand, but I think it'd be more efficient maybe if the First Selectman was allowed to receive the smaller grants or the smaller amounts and respond appropriately to the giver, the gifter. I just am looking at it and saying, yeah, it seems like a whole lot of these that you just, you just read, and maybe they could be handled a little differently rather than legislating. The other thing I have a question is, the Web Mountain Discovery Zone, is that not a 501(c)(3)? And if it is, why would the legislative body be, be concerned about that? Question. I understand the term, like Food Pantry, and that they're associated with the town, but I think, I believe that Web Mountain is a 501(c)(3) as many other organizations such as the St. West Ghoutian and the Historical Society, and you don't control, I mean, you don't, you don't get involved with those things, so just make some comments.
As, as we, as we would say back at school when an upperclassman would ask a question we didn't know, I don't know, sir, but we'll find out.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? Seeing none, move on to appointments. I don't believe we have any appointments. Seeing none, moving on to action items. Action item A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters.
So Chairman, I'd be happy to report since Mr. Kellis is not here this night, there was a meeting that we held December sixteenth, and the focus of that discussion was to do some research in regards of basically senior tax relief programs. It started out as a discussion on the abatement program, we are looking at this point to look at kind of the full gamut of abatement, deferrals, there's different programs that are all available, some are state-run, some are within our jurisdiction by state statute, so we're in the process of working with the tax, I'm sorry, the assessors' office as well as doing some research for the towns, just to see where we are relative to other, other towns and see if we can make some recommendations to make sure that we are the most current as we would want to be. I think that's, unless you'd like to add to that.
I do, I attended the Board of Education meeting on Jan- excuse me, January fourth, and you probably all know by now that they came in with a one point nine six percent budget increase. They also stated that there were three underground tanks that are not in that budget, and they're looking to the Board of Finance to perhaps put that in a bonding issue, and also a truck for about eighty thousand dollars that is not in that budget, so they're looking for bonding down the road, I guess, for that. They're having a problem at Monroe Elementary, there's a leak in the condensation pipe, and every time they fix one, more, more spring, leaks spring up, so, but they're, they're working on the problem and they're going to fund that with their emergency funds that they have already. They did a wonderful presentation on roles and responsibilities for the Board of Education, and I thought that was really neat, and I'm going to give a copy to the LNA because really you could take that and, and, you know, bring it to all boards, it could really, you know, be effective for all boards, I think, in commissions, I'll have them take a look at that. So it was a very good meeting that they had.
Thank you, Ms. Kansky.
Mr. Chairman, I can just go back in addition to the FEPS committee report itself, I can give you some liaison reports, the Board of Health did meet on January twenty-first, I'm sorry, no, that's incorrect, it's a different date, it's in January, that date cannot be correct. I'm sorry, too many dates in my head at once, it was early January, first week of January. I just wanted to report that a couple of things that will be eventually making its way to council is they are working actively on a medical advisor job description, they are also working on some memorandum of understandings with some neighboring jurisdictions to be able to provide, just to memorialize the concept of mutual aid amongst local health departments, and also looking at an agreement with Sacred Heart University to have assistance, a kind of a mutual beneficiary, a program that would be mutually beneficial to us and Sacred Heart in utilizing student nurses in public health. And that was Board of Health, EMS did not meet, they were having some membership issues on their commission which had been resolved, and my understanding is they're on track for a regular meeting, they allow this moment. So that's that.
Thank you, Mr. Kellis. Moving on to action item B, Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works and Parks and Recreation Matters.
Sure, I can give you that update. Councilman Kapoor, Councilman Rooney and I had met before the holidays in December, we had our first meeting where the primary purpose of that meeting was to elect the officials for the subcommittee, so I was elected Chairman and Councilman Rooney was elected Secretary. That was pretty much what we accomplished, but there's been a few things that have happened since then. We also assigned, if you notice, that's a long string of other boards and commissions, so each one of us is taking on some accountability, and what we'll do is, when we give that update, each one of us will kind of round robin it through. Some of them we've had updates with, some of them we haven't. We, I have been speaking to and attending planning and zoning meetings, essentially what's coming out of there from, from a council perspective, there's no regulations or policies we need to know about right now, but again, they're, they're looking at signage policies and regulations, they're looking at septic tanks and all that kind of stuff. They've also, they wanted us to report that Route one eleven, you know, it's got a lot of construction on it, as you come into town, you can see a lot going on there, the Goddard School, Goodwill, if you go, you know, deeper into town, you start heading towards Pepper Street, you've got Axle Plastics going in, so the town planners and the engineers are doing a good job with that, so they're, they're busy, they're very busy. We scheduled another one, we actually have it for tomorrow. Purposes of that meeting are to start hearing about the major components of the budgets coming up. So tomorrow is going to be about, right now on the agenda is Public Works, so Mr. Nowak is going to come in, speak to that, Dr. Zamri is going to come in about IT and facilities, and I believe the EDC folks, the Economic Development Committee are going to be coming in and they're going to tail that up at the end. There could be a possibility in addition to that, but I think we'll go over that once we get to, to new business, that would be explained after. So that was planning and zoning and IT. Mr. Kapoor, did you want to give any updates on your stuff?
Yes. There's nothing from inland wetlands for a coun- from a council, from a council perspective. The Economic Development Commission has changed their regular meeting date to the third Tuesday of the month from whatever it was, I don't even remember what it was before, but it's now the third Tuesday. I also just want to correct the record from something I said last time, I was mistaken. The Inland Wetlands Commission has five current members, at the last council meeting I said four, I was working off an old list, so they have five, there are two openings there. The Town Clerk has published a new list as of, as of December twenty-second for appointed officials, and it's clean and good to go, which is great. However, looking it over, there is a huge problem with appointments, just so everyone's, everyone's aware, there are twenty-three vacancies right now on boards and commissions out of a hundred, it's like a hundred and twenty-four slots, so that really needs to be addressed. Conservation is, is a big problem, they only have four out of seven filled, so if one person's sick or absent, they don't have a quorum for a meeting, so that's super, super important. Also, just while I'm talking, I attended a workshop this past weekend up in Suddington put on by CCM for municipal budgets, they were, it was extremely informative, they were happy enough to email out the slides to all the participants, I sent them to the First Selectman, and I hope he can send them to the entire council and Board of Finance. Even, you don't even have to be there to get the information, it's all on here, it's really, really great, so.
Is that something you'd be able to elaborate in in maybe the Strategic Subcommittee Conversation, or?
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Rooney.
Other than Parks and Rec had a meeting last Monday, did not attend, they have an issue with the pool fees, but we'll address that later. Other than that, nothing to report.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, thank you very much. Moving on to action item C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. We haven't met since our last Town Council meeting, we have to get together and discuss on our next meeting day hopefully within the next couple of weeks here, maybe before the next session. Ms. Martin, is there anything you wanted to report at all on legislative?
No, there's nothing new. There's a lot on the agenda.
Right.
There's nothing new that, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, I just would like to ping LNA for Board of Ethics ordinance as well, I think that's been languishing in LNA for quite some time, and I was, I saw the Board of Ethics Chair in Big Y, and he just asked me to mention it, so I'm mentioning it.
Right, and I think that's something that's on the, on the list, as they say.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Moving on to action item B, Trumbull Monroe Health District.
That was supposed to be taken off the agenda.
Okay, striking that? Anything officially have to do for striking it, or can just do that? Action item A, Strategic Planning Committee.
So the committee has met a couple times, I believe, since our last meeting, December twenty-second and twenty-eighth, I know the minutes are in your, in the package, so I won't belabor it. The committee has been focusing on Chalk Hill, including a walkthrough facility which was very well received, I think, by all who were participating. Committee is still working on, you know, finalizing their thoughts around that and the intent to bring information back to the full council in the near future so we can all discuss that as a, as a full council. In addition to that, obviously, you know, we're, we are looking at large, looking at the large projects that some, some departments and program areas have submitted, you know, given that this committee has started up with very little time in between the budget season, I think it's something that we're going to probably be entertaining as we go through the budget cycle and involve more to finance, so more to follow on that. The goal really was just to get information at this point, I think that will continue to evolve, but hopefully we'll, you know, more information we get the better. I think it'll be helpful to make sure that there's no projects or ideas out there that haven't been fully voiced and aired during the elsewhere the budget cycle, but more to follow on that. We also have heard from Councilman Kapoor, was good enough to come with Catherine Lombardi to discuss some work that they've done, I think along with, I think Mr. Bonoski was involved in as well, in regards to non-union pay plan issues, and that's something that they were going to go back, I know they've done some additional work since that committee meeting, so that's some work that's in process. Other than that, we have not yet scheduled another meeting, I was waiting for us to resolve our budget meetings that would be forthcoming so we could fit things in around that, so next meeting TVB. And if you'd like to add to that, sure.
I didn't know if you wanted to.
Oh, yeah.
Nick had a question as well.
Oh, no, I just, the slides, the First Selectman emailed us out about the budget, it was put on by CCM, which is the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, they do a ton of free trainings all over the state on different things, there were sixty Board of Finance and Council and Board of Selectmen members at the Suddington Police Department, it was the Comptroller of the City of Bristol and the Town Manager of Avon, and it just, it just really goes, there's detail, but it goes through the basics too, so we can all use the same terminology, so we all know what we're talking about. I had sent something to Councilman Kellis as well, the budget of the town of Avon, the, who knew, but they give out awards for municipal budgets, and the town of Avon has an award-winning budget, but they have a very interesting thing that they put at the front of their budget, which is, they also have a Strategic Planning Committee, and they just have a list of all the strategic planning documents in Avon, what office they're located in and when they were adopted, just on one list. So I think that'd be really something cool for our Strategic Planning Committee to look at, just to have it all in one place, right? And all the time we say, oh, we have to update, update this because it hasn't been talked about since nineteen seventy-five, right? So if we see something was adopted forty years ago, I don't know, maybe we should look at it, so we'll have all the information in one place, but it was really informative, and you'll see all that information very soon.
Anything else?
No.
I don't know, Ms. Martin, did you have anything?
Do you want to?
Strategic stuff?
No.
Why, a fun one?
Oh, that's right, you had, you were given a little side assignment from.
Little side assignment.
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot.
No, you weren't giving it, you took it.
I did, I took that one.
I forgot about that.
You took it, yeah.
I did.
Thank you.
All right, so I had the, I had the privilege of speaking to Mr. Moss from the Historic Committee for what was supposed to be a very quick look at some lumber and timber in Beardsley House Cottage, or Urge, this is like a carriage house, and it turned into quite a long time talking to him and picking his brain on the Historic Commission and what he knows about this town, absolutely fascinating stuff, but let me get to the point, there is hundreds and hundreds of board feet of original, and from what I could see, it looked like, it looked like chestnut and fir, various types, timber, beams, posts, a lot of tenement mortars, a lot of old construction post and beam, as well as some old panel, three-quarter, four-quarter thickness of woods, you would, you would have had a blast over there. And we were, we were kind of picking through it, looking at it, and it is the original wood of the Masonic Hall from seventeen ninety-six or something like that, and it's, it's one of the last, if it's not a building, it's one of the last remnants we have in Monroe of our, of our history. And coupled with a nice book that the Historic Commission did, he was nice enough to, I bought one, he did not give me one, so I'm going on record as buying one, he, just really fascinating stuff, and I think, I think we should try to do something about this piece of history. I don't know what yet, there's a lot of ideas, I can tell you, there's, there's many people in town who have very visceral, emotional, extremely electric ties to this lumber, and it's, it's going to be a tough conversation, but a good conversation that I think we can all band around. So more to come, he's got a person from the state looking at it, Historic Trust Commission from the state to see if we can even apply for a grant, he's reaching out and possibly even having us help him write that grant, because I think there's got to be some levels of privilege and also accountability and jurisdiction to this stuff, so it's uncharted territory, so we got to look into it. So I can certainly say if anybody has any interest in going over there, looking at it, or talking to me about it, or talking to Mr. Moss about it, just, just grab me and we'll go from there, but more to come.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your opportunity.
You're the logical person to, with your background.
That handoff was, was easy, I guess, just to segue onto that, Mr. Moss was at our Strategic Planning Committee.
Yes, he was.
And did bring us information on, a refresher course really on the, the nature trail that runs behind Chalk Hill as we were discussing the whole issue.
The conservative.
Yeah, which was good because it brought another aspect of that whole discussion, so he was, he was very helpful there.
He also, he also talked about open, open municipal owned.
Yeah, there was a, there was a discussion which, again, I think, yeah, we could, you know, talk further at a subsequent meeting, but there was, the Conservation Commission wanting to reinforce the concept of having, having open space, you know, funds available, allocations for open space, and I think there was a little discussion of just the mechanics of that, and Mr. Bonoski had some history and background of how that worked in the past and some of the issues around it, so I think the point was just to ensure that there was some visibility that the Conservation Commission highlights several areas of land which, you know, would potentially benefit the town to become permanent open space, but there needs to be a fund available to, to do that when that, when that land, if and when that land would have become available, so. That was just his.
Even if he even had statistics on it, what a percentage of.
Yeah. So just to kind of, that was, I think, the gist of his comments.
Just about every year, DEP comes out with grants for open space and recreational land, so, and I've gotten some from Beth- for Bethel, so they don't pay for it all, you know, you'll get maybe fifty percent of it, but they'll purchase, help you purchase open space land.
Thanks, everyone, for that detailed report. Moving on to action item F, EMS Facility Workshop, Mr. Kellis?
Thank you, so that committee, that workroom did also meet December twenty-ninth, there was, again, those minutes are in your package, so I, I won't go into great detail, the highlights are that the process continues before, the needs assessment portion, which is really the most critical thing, is, is still waiting for the EMS, EMS Commission review, and as I said earlier during the FEPS report, that commission has had some difficulties in getting meetings scheduled, so with the commission hopefully back on track, we hope we'll get some input from them sooner rather than later. In the meantime, we're starting to have conversations about, further conversations about funding, we all obviously are aware of the steep grant process which continues, you know, that, that's a process that we're just kind of monitoring with the state to continue to move that along, we're talking about other, other options that may be out there, researching other grants, et cetera, so that's pretty much where we left off of setting meeting pace for the rest of the year.
That's it?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Kellis.
Action item J, First Selectman's Update.
Yes, as Ms. Kansky said, the Board of Education, working very closely with my office, and then our Finance Department has got their budget down to one point nine six. Obviously, we know that's a very fluid number, things can change up or down from there, but they've done a very good job and kept us in the loop all the way. Obviously, budget meetings have started with Town Hall, department heads, I have to give the department heads a lot of credit, they came in with a good game plan for this year, once again this year, as in last year, you'll see all the backup as to why and what they've asked for, I think it's a very good thing that we've started with this new budget and our capital planning. One of the things I would like to float you by, because we did in fact have a couple of budget meetings this Saturday, so we had staff coming in on a Saturday, I want to thank Mr. Bonoski, Ms. Mead, Ms. Lombardi, but that's one of the things I wanted to bring up, and I know Nick and I have spoken about this, the idea of floating weekend hours for joint meetings, what makes me hesitate is because when we had a meeting on a Friday night and we were closed, I heard some, some grumbling, so I just want to have, float that by you to decide to talk to your Chairman. Ron and I and Heidi are here on Saturdays anyway, I know you all have busy lives with children and everything, but I really think we should offer a, at least a joint meeting on a weekend to, to get any people who have to, well, people do have to work, I'm sure you guys have to work, I know, Lee, you don't, but, you know, the rest of us have the rest of us have to. But, how about you there, Mr. Stevens?
I'm smiling at you, bud.
No, we want to get as many people involved in the budget process as possible. We want to, if we can offer weekend hours, I think that'd be a tremendous boon. I'd like, I'd like your thoughts on that through your chairman, I'd like everything to come through the chairman, unless you all want to tell me now, you'd love to do it, I'd love that idea, but I know, Ms. Kapoor would, it was a great idea you brought up, and I think, I think we should do that more often, have weekend meetings. I'd also like to update you on the Harem Hill Blighthouse that has been plaguing us for the last couple of years. It is gone. The neighbors are very happy. It did take through a process, I don't want to get into that tonight, but the owner is still not happy, he has to vacate his house, but he's gone. So, the neighbors are very happy. Another good point, last week, I met with the Bridgeport Metro, it's called the Metro Cognow, and the Connecticut Department of DOT in Newtown, Newtown, Newington, we met regarding the Route 25 and Route 111, the changes in the RFQ that'll be coming out as far as improving 111 and 25 corridors. As you know, there's been significant growth on our, from our troubled borders on both, and there will be, the Baghdadi property, the old Reed's warehouse, the Nature Center across the street, that's all designated for retail. And as I put out a couple of years back, I've been hounding the state DOT to make improvements. We finally got that grant through the Metro Cog, so we're up there working on that. Let's see, New Year's Eve, I want to, I want to call out Mr. Manny Camber and staff, they actually stayed open pretty late on New Year's Eve night to collect taxes. Last couple of years, we've, we've closed early, and even though you can do it at a bank and do it online, Manny chose to stay open, and it was very good customer service in that sense. To that also, CCM does hold ongoing trainings, and we do have a lot of them here, but we did do a customer service program for our employees, which we've had done in the past. I want to bring that out for several reasons, but we were the most, we were the most attended, we had the most attendance of any town. There were about sixteen different towns, we had about maybe forty of our employees show up for various reasons. Then, last but not least is, oh, the MEF. You saw in the, you saw in the Courier at the beginning of the year that we wanted to start up the, the MEF, the Monroe Education Foundation. It was a foundation started a few years ago that's been disbanded for over two years, waiting for the resignation of one last member who does not live in town anymore, but that one last member has to A, resign, and B, approve the two names of people that we already have. So as soon as that person resigns and appoints these two people, we'll hear a lot of good things out of the MEF. That is it.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman.
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, I guess, go ahead, Ms. Kapoor.
Not, not a question for the First Selectman, I don't really know where in the agenda would be appropriate to, I don't want to step on the First Selectman's toes, but just for information purposes, Congressman Himes will be here in Monroe next Thursday, January 19th, at 6:30 PM, right here in town, in chambers for a Town Hall. And also State Senator Marilyn Moore will be at the Edith Wheeler Library from 5:00 to 7:00 on Thursday, January 28th for office hours. Just wanted to make that known.
I was going to mention that through, on, on Facebook and everything else, I had, there's a few other things that have to be shored up with Congressman Himes. Senator Moore, once again, and please relay this to her, was supposed to come through my office to set that up, she promised it, she said that she would tell me and did not. So please, just-
I just saw those on there.
Congressman Himes always does that, that's why I didn't announce it tonight. We need Ms. Moore to do the same thing. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Moving on to unfinished business, any unfinished business? No? Next area would be new business, Item A, WMNR CPR, excuse me, CPB Grant for Fiscal Year 2016.
We've got the attachment in there about the grant, it's not a matching grant, they do require CPB's increasing requirements for transparency, and so we put various documents on our website, including, they want to establish a diversity plan, which we try and have diverse programming, diverse volunteers as best we can. And honestly, they don't make us too much for $93,000 in a break before it. So, are there any questions about the grant?
Anyone?
Anything different this year than previous years? Same process? Same requirements, same?
Yes.
Nothing different?
Nothing different.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
So I, I move that we resolve, the Town Council approves the Corporation for Public Broadcasting CPB Fiscal Year 2016 Grant to WMNR of $93,250, no matching funds required, and authorize the First Selectman to sign on behalf of the town.
Second.
Second, second for Mr. Kapoor. Vote in favor? Excuse me, hold on, I guess the discussion part?
No.
No? Vote in favor? New Business, Item B, the steep grant to renovate the food pantry. Ms. Jaeger?
Well, I respectfully ask the Town Council to pass a resolution that includes in the grant, it's due at the end of the week. It's pretty much finished. It will go in one way or the other, but I would appreciate if there's support for renovation of the food pantry building. It's something that has needed to be done since we moved in years ago. Only the basic maintenance is on the building, and the increase in the amount of people who are using it. This past year, from 2014 to 2015, we've had 62 new families-
Wow.
-join the food pantry. We're really maxed out on our space. It's not very efficient, and it's not ADA compliant, there's a lot of issues there. So we would like to use the steep grant to completely renovate the building, move the food pantry down to the lower level, which is the garage and basement area, and then on the upstairs, where the food pantry is currently, that would now become social services office. So we would move the social service office, the mental health counselor, also the, I've been in discussion with Deb Greenwood from the Center for Family Justice, and she's very interested in moving over there also, because it gives privacy, which we do not have here at Town Hall. And we also will have meeting space and rooms for teens to come from MASC, and we can hopefully then be in a good position to try to reinstate the funding for the Youth Services Bureau. So we have a lot on our agenda for the amount of, and the footprint of the building will not change, and we're not asking the town for any money outside of this deep grant. The only I can think of is in the future, we might need to expand the parking on the upper level closer, near the MASC, primarily for staff parking, but there should be sufficient parking in the rear for clients. So, I also, I already have basic architectural drawings, we've done preliminary drawings, we have a list of the construction timetable, we have everything, we really spent a lot of time on it, so. If anyone has any questions?
Ms. Kansky, I think-
Can you tell me the amount of the grant?
$500,000.
We're going for the max.
I'm going for the max.
May I suggest then that the resolution be amended? Is this appropriate time for me to do that?
It hasn't been moved yet.
Okay. I'll wait.
Mr. Kapoor?
I saw in your letter, in the, in our original packets, not that we had tonight, that this is the second time the grant's been submitted. What happened to the first one?
It wasn't approved. It wasn't-
Nothing happened, it just got denied off, so?
Well, you have to understand that there's 169 towns, and they've only got $20,000, so it's, it's a round thing, and, and so not everybody gets chosen. Bethel didn't get it last year either. So, you know, it's, it's competitive.
Can, can they, can they decrease the amount for what, or do they have to give you-
They could, yes.
They could. So they give you $250 instead of $100?
And if that happens, then we would make reservations, reservations, renovations to the food pantry and not plan on moving social services and things down there.
But this is in a round, if, the money goes out in, in rounds.
Right, no, I know that.
Yeah.
First, anybody else first? Anyone else, comments?
I'm just curious if there's anything materially different in this application versus last year's application?
It's pretty much basically the same application. I've spent a little more time on community need, so I've reworked some of the narrative from last year, and brought that up to date and stuff, so it's not exactly the same.
Okay, but the nature of the renovation-
Great, yeah, that hasn't changed any. The only that might change is when, if we, you know, we're successful in getting the money, that when we get into it, that it may not, like lowering the basement floor may not be an option, you know, so things may have to change there, but.
And the increase in the need was, was a good point to bring up too.
And the one thing I did want to say is, last year I did have the option, first of all, I want to thank you for, for two years of doing this work, and I know you got, not mad at me last year, but the EMS program had to go through for a lot of various reasons, but one thing that, well, I guess Phyllis knows because they know how competitive it is, but I had the option of giving each $250, and I thought that was not fair to EMS and certainly not fair to Barb's program. So I want to commend you for sticking with me and trusting me that we put it up again this year. That being said, I don't know how many of you have actually been in that building, but if we don't fix it soon, we bought a building how many years ago for almost half million dollars and had no maintenance plan for it, and this poor lady's been moving around nickel and dime and how to get different machinery in there and get different programs in there that basically, we have to fix that building, it's a town entity. Certainly, we can sell it and move everything to Chalk Hill, but that wouldn't be the thing. But one thing I'm very happy with is the fact that we bought together some good social services that we fought hard for in the past few budgets, and unfortunately, we see the remnants of, of what's happening with the people coming in and bringing their kids and having to sit around outside or coming later on, and you know why they're there, and there's no place for them to sit, no place for them to feel comfortable. And I have to give our staff, Deidre and, Deidre, our mental health advocate there, and Center for Women in Family Justice, for giving us the, the place to have these people be there by themselves, but it's still not a, very conducive to friendliness, but moving this building along will be a lot better for everybody. So I hope that you do pass this, and we can pass along to the state, because I have a good feeling we'll, we'll be okay with that money.
The, the Department of Family Justice?
Center for Family Justice.
Center for Family Justice.
That is not, that is not a, that is a private?
Yes, they currently have office space here in the town.
Okay, so, so when the time comes, there's insurance issues?
Oh, yeah, we've got it all covered, everything's, yeah. Same thing as now.
Okay.
Mr. Kapoor?
I just want to add that in the Fletcher Thompson Report on town buildings, the food pantry was one of like the top five with, there are myriad things that need to be done at that building, which you're going to address with the money, I understand.
Well, basically, the whole thing will be redone. We would, we would convert the furnace to gas, we would take out the oil, you know, all new, everything would be completely redone.
I'm arguing in your favor even more.
So, it would be a, it'd be a new building.
Yeah, it has, it has to be.
Yeah, the, the current thing is, is the way this, and that's why I give you guys so many kudos with what you're doing as far as looking into, delving into things more, we never would have bought that building with, with the council we have now, as the council we had then, because there's just, there was no plan, there was no future, there was no vision. And we finally, that's true, because nothing got fixed, nothing got budgeted.
No, I'm agreeing.
I know. It, it's sad, it's really sad, but I commend everybody here, and Phyllis, you know, because we're going to work on this and get it done the right way. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Jaeger.
Chair?
Mr. Kellag?
I move that it be resolved that the Town Council supports the submission of the 2016 Small Town Economic Assistance Program or steep grant application in the amount of $500,000 to be used for renovations on the existing food pantry building, and authorize the First Selectman to sign on behalf of the town.
Second.
Mr. Kapoor, seconds. Vote, all those, excuse me, further discussion?
No, I, I was going to put in the $500,000, and beat you to it.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, we take a vote for approval. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes seven, zero. New Business, Item C, screw the resolution for transfer of funds, tax collector's office. Mr. Bonoski?
Does anyone have any questions on the resolution? It's pretty solid.
If you could, if you might, for the sake of the public that's here, just, show me just a quick thumbnail.
Yeah, basically, the tax collector's office, there was an individual in the office who was out ill, and she needed, basically, his part-time, so the line item budgeted, budgeted for his part-time salary was utilized for the coverage while she was outside. So he needed to, the proposal before he was to transfer funds from within his department, where there, at this time, there is room to transfer.
Okay. Any questions?
There is room to transfer.
Yes.
Any questions?
And the projection is, is that we won't, you know, he won't go over in that account.
So you're saying that he doesn't, he's not going to need any more office expense money?
That's the way it's looking right now.
Mr. Kellag?
Chairman, I move that it be resolved, and in accordance with Chapter 8, Section 7F of the Town Charter, that a transfer of $8,000 from the tax collector's office expense line item be moved to the tax collector's salaries part-time line item.
Give a second.
For fiscal year ending June 30, 2016.
Give a second, Kevin, Mr. Reed, second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Bonoski, thank you. Take a vote for all those in favor. Vote passes seven, zero. New Business, Item D, Town Council Budget Workshop Dates, proposed, 2016 slash 17, This is just the upcoming calendar for the proposed budget meeting, so I don't know if anybody's had a lot of time to look at it. Does anybody have any comments in particular about the proposed schedule? Mr. Kapoor?
Yeah, I don't like the schedule. First of all, the first thing that I'd like to see in here is a public hearing at 10:00 AM on February 13th, which is a Saturday, joint public hearing between the Town Council and the Board of Finance, with a snow date of February 20th. I hear we're entering a more active pattern. And I would also like February 11th at 6:30 PM added, and February 18th at 6:30 PM added, and I will explain why. I looked back in my budget documents when I was on the council for the fiscal year 14 budget, and that year, I have a copy if anybody wants to look at it, that year, that was before we did the joint budget workshops between the Town Council and the Board of Finance. And in that year, we had five budget workshops just for the Town Council. And I remember, they all started at 7 o'clock, I remember 10 o'clock nights that year. And I just feel that the way that the current calendar is set, it is not enough time for us to properly ask the questions that we want to ask. Between the Town Council and the Board of Finance, there's 15 members.
15 departments.
15 members and more than that, there's like 30 departments. I mean, if you break it down, each of us has like 45 seconds to ask department heads questions on their entire budget. Imagine trying to ask the Chief of Police your list of questions in, in a minute or two minutes. So, there was, there was no motion to approve the calendar, if there, if there is a motion, I would like to amend it, or however, those are my comments. If there, if there is a motion, I, I would like to amend it or however, those are my comments on the calendar.
If I, if I could, and when Mr. Kapoor, when you were on council last, you were, you were, you'd never got all the information up ahead. All the backup information. You're now getting all that backup information. So the questions, um, first of all, you're not going to need it because the budget's going to be so good, you're just going to prove it right through.
Right, of course, of course.
But that being said, you get a lot more backup information now. And as you do, and I know most of the councilmen do, they, they ask a lot of the questions that they never did before in subcommittee. It's broken out completely different since the last time you were on there. So I'd also like to keep that in consideration.
I think there are questions that come up during the workshop. And then I think there are also questions that, um, need to be on the record. I mean, I, I, I plan on asking department heads before, once the budget comes out, before some of the workshops, to ask them questions. But I'm still going to ask that question in a public meeting, have it on the minutes. But if I only have thirty seconds to do that, I might not, it's, it's, it's just not enough time to properly go through the budget, in my opinion.
Can I say something?
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm not used to looking down here. I think something to consider in, in Nick's comments too is with the new process that we did last year, which was effective to have us together, I think, and the information that we had beforehand. But something to consider is when you have that follow-up question, you have no opportunity to ask it really. It's, it's always said to us and, and sometimes happens, I'll get that information for you from, uh, in, any department. But there's not a place, as in a time, a specific meeting time, for us to get that feedback and for everyone to hear it at the same time. And the additional days, I do agree, would probably give us that opportunity for the question that you had that was not answered at the moment by the department.
Another thing too is that, I mean, once, if, if we're, if we're splitting up thirty-two departments over two nights, sixteen departments, if we're starting at six thirty, by the time we get to like nine, nine fifteen, we're not at our best either. I mean, we've been sitting here for two and a half to three hours asking question after question after all of us had worked day, worked and, and done whatever we've done throughout the day. So I just think the extra days are excellent for follow-up questions that come up during hearings. And we can also just divvy up the departments so that we have more time to ask our questions intelligently and department heads can answer in, and, I don't know what I said.
I can just maybe draw the last two budgets that I've been involved with, you know, relatively, relatively short timer on Town Council. I don't really recall, you know, I don't want to say need, that's probably the wrong word. But I didn't feel anyone was being held back or restricted or overly, you know, the meetings were overly lengthy or, you know, the Q and As were condensed to a point where anybody seemed to object at least too overtly. I could be wrong in my assessment, but, um, with regards to additional meetings, I mean, obviously, it's a, it's an idea to discuss. But I just wanted to, you know, at least keep my views on what the last two cycles have been for, for myself.
This is just Town Council. Mr. Reed.
What are, what are we trying to do with this budget, this budget? Why is it on the agenda? Are we making a motion to approve it? Is that the, is that the purpose of tonight?
I was under.
Looks like, looks like it's just, you know, the.
So, so, so just from a point of order, if we're trying to approve this, my recommendation would be wait till our chairman and vice chairman is back. So that's my first. In commentary back, you know, I don't, I don't disagree with that. Last year was my first year and I was hearing all kinds of stuff on the budget process here. And how it's ruling and it's this and that. What I got in front of me was what I would expect from a municipality or corporation, which is a very clear budget and a very clear binder, broken out through different views. You know, whether it be my business department or business unit or service, whatever the case may be. I wasn't with it until, until, I don't remember if it was Eunice Martin or Eunice Kapoor. You said it was about the follow-up. I do remember kind of standing there last year going, did we get a follow? Like, we were all looking at each other. Did we get a follow-up on that one?
Did we ever get the answer to that?
Yeah, did we ever get the answer to that? Now, when I, when I look at this a little more closely, and I mean, I had a kind of a more guttural reaction to a, a second one. We do what we have to to get this done. We have to meet every day we meet every day. That's not what this is about. But I, the first two, the ten, seventeenth, Steve, Mr. Badger, that's, that's a split up of departments, correct? If I remember.
Yes.
Okay. So then, I'm, I'm, personally, I'm with you on the eighteenth.
Okay.
I'm with you on the eighteenth because that could be a collective, even if it's just us, doesn't matter. Where we call those back that do need to come back. And that will be in a result of what happens on the seventeenth. Because you do have to remember, I, we were getting some stuff on that twenty-second, that hour and a half before our, our regular council meeting. We did have folks come back. I mean, I remember Ms. Jaeger came back and talked to us a bunch of stuff, you know, what was going on in the senior center and some other things. So there was clarification there. So, I, you know, I'll, I'll go on the record and say I'm, I'm for an eighteenth meeting.
You know, if you could though.
But, but, you know.
Yeah, I, I'm just counting up. You still have seven meetings and you can still always add special meetings.
Yeah, we can add special meetings as well. And that's why I asked the first question, which is what are, what are we trying to do tonight? And are we trying to approve? We don't have to approve it. I think this was a good discussion. I, I don't think we're.
Because there will be joint meetings with Board of Finance too. This is just Town Council. So you do have still seven meetings, but you have the Board of Finance in there.
No, these are ju.
No, these are, these are, these are.
These are the budget meetings between the both boards, right? Ten, the only ones that are scheduled are ten and seventeen.
You are correct that we can call them.
Yeah, you can call them.
We did, we did last year, so I'm, I'm for that.
I'm just saying it would be, I mean, two points I want to make. I just want to, it would be better to get this done sooner rather than later. I always had the impression that we had to approve the calendar. I don't know if we have to make a motion to approve. If that's the case though, we meet, our next council meeting meets after the Board of Finance meets. So if this is going to be changed and the Board of Finance has to adopt it, then there has to be a discussion next, because there are meetings next week. And the public hearing on the Saturday is just because the first electman is presenting his budget at seven o'clock on the eighth, followed directly by a public hearing. And if I'm a member of the public and I want to comment on the budget, then I only have the time that he's presenting his budget, the half an hour, forty-five minutes that he's presenting, to get my thoughts together intelligently, just because that's the way the charter works, you know what I mean? So it would just give people an extra day to, an extra couple of days to come and talk and get their comments on the record.
What would we do?
I'm sorry.
I don't want to make this natural conversation. What would we do? We talked about this last year, right? We were all in the, in the MASC, I didn't even see you leave. We were all in the MASC, uh, library, the media center, talking about how it's our duty and our obligation to make sure that people understand the budget and what that means. You know, if we were to do the Saturday thing, if I'm for it, it goes out with a massive amount of marketing. We cannot just Facebook it. I mean, it's effective. You know, you, you got a few people there, but there's twenty thousand people in town, right? So, you know, we, I would be for it if we, if we kind of mass marketed that and stir up some buzz and get people here, make it worth it. I'd, I'd be for that.
I think it's important to remember too, the discussion that you're referring to occurred after the first budget went down.
Yes, yeah. And we were all standing there wondering what happened.
This is more proactive. Now, we may do it and get two people.
Right.
But.
We offered it.
You offered it. You're there. You're ready to answer questions or, and/or get input.
Well, let's, let's offer it. Let's offer it with a lot of marketing and put the hot points of the budget out there. Because that was another thing that some folks, that resonated with me a lot. You know, as you said, you were, you were quoted there in the Monroe Courier, most of the budget is actually fairly static. It's things like programs and these big changes that are actually what cause some of the emotional drive, which is justified. So if we had a, you know, in the sales and marketing campaign to get people here on a Saturday, here's why you need to come Saturday, because what you need to know about this budget is X, Y, and Z. So come and share your thoughts.
I'm, I'm all for it.
So I'm, I'm for that. That's a good idea.
So on that note, we'll table this until the.
Well, I don't know. You just brought up the Board of Finance has to adopt that if we add.
No, 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 the Board of Finance still has meetings after this.
Okay.
This, right here, you can keep everything the same way it is and add a date. The Board of Finance has all separate meetings after this.
If we want the Board of Finance to be at the eighteenth meeting, they have to.
Well, that's plenty of time for that, I think. If we held off.
It's, it's still, they don't have to really. They have their own joint meetings. They'll have a joint meeting, they'll have joint meetings with you after Town Council. This is just Town Council. If the Board of Finance wants to be there, they can.
My comments are on the record. I just am asking for the eleventh, the eighteenth, and the thirteenth. And I'll leave it there and we can have a discussion at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll, we'll table this, this item for the.
I think we, we even need one whole night just for capital projects, to be honest with you. We could do two hours on that alone. Or it could be capital projects slash Chalk Hill. That would take up three hours, four hours. Also, I'm sorry.
It's quite a far.
Where are you sleeping then?
Anything else to be done on this one, do you think?
I'm scratching my head.
Moving on to act, a new business, new business item E, donation to Wed Mountain Discovery Zone in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred dollars.
Is there a resolution on that?
Some Wed Mountain stuff. You can just give.
You're on the chair with us.
Hold on a second.
Chairman, I move that we accept and acknowledge the donation in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred dollars from Catherine Amon Thomas Albohgan to the Wed Mountain Discovery Zone.
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't think they're here, but they are. It's great to appreciate.
I think, I think there was a follow-up though by, uh, something, I, I think we should put that on the record. I don't know if there is an issue with the five oh one.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
It's not, no, okay.
It's not?
I did not think it was, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure. So thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Albohgan is the gentleman who runs the program. Uh, and the woman is his, his spouse.
He's paying to run it?
Using his own money.
Okay, with that, with that said, vote for approval. Seven zero passes. Last item for new business, item F, Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule.
I had a, which, I had a thought on that.
Which we don't technically have or do have or.
Well, we, we, we do. Um, my, this is just my personal opinion on this. This is the first we're seeing. I think there was just a little bit of a, of a scheduling mismatch. So my, my rec, my personal recommendation would be that, you know, Planning and Zoning Park and Rec Subcommittee, that Mr. Kapoor and Mr. Ruddy, we ask Mr. Cooper from Park and Rec to show up tomorrow night, six o'clock, go over a few things, just prime us, so that at the next council meeting, we actually are educated. We can bring the council, Mr. Cooper can come to council and explain this at the next meeting. I, I think, Mr. Badger, you said it's okay if it happens then.
I can't guarantee he's going to be there tomorrow night, but one day.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I mean, we'll, we'll get, we'll get a hold of him in between.
You know, a little special.
At a minimum, he'll show up to the next council meeting and explain.
I thought he'd already been there, so if I said get it on there.
Ms. Kansky.
Is there any way that we can make this a little bigger? Because I can't read it.
Or maybe we get it electronically.
Jeez.
I don't know, whatever.
We will, we will get that happening.
Yeah, there, there's a few changes in this that we'll discuss.
I concur. I agree.
And I, I, I support that and that is in line with our concept of moving that kind of work to subcommittee. I think that's exactly what belongs and come back here for further discussion. So I support that.
Okay, with that.
We just don't vote on it.
With that, with that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Is this timely at all? Do you need?
No, he said he can do.
Yeah, it's, it's, I thought it already went through, uh, subcommittee. That's why he just said, can you put it on the agenda? I said, sure. I assumed it already went through your subcommittee. Sorry. No problem.
Just a, just a mismatch.
I mean, is there any unforward effect of us waiting two weeks in terms of when this fee schedule is intended to go into place?
No, you know, we'll do it.
Well, no, but it's, um, in the past, it's been a little bit more of a rush because they, they were looking at printing fees and brochures, that kind of stuff. If that's an issue, then.
Hopefully, two weeks won't, uh, break the bank.
Should we approve it conditionally?
We wait for that.
I don't know what conditions we're going to have for the next item.
I don't know, I'm just, that's a good point about printing fees.
We can wait a little bit.
Okay.
That's fine.
Did you see the pool?
I'm sorry?
Did you see the pool line?
Yeah, I know.
Let them know a little bit, just why. If anyone's in the voice mail, so I'll get the answer back if need be. Hopefully, we can get a court for a special move quick, if it need be.
Okay, I think that, except for new business, um, moving on, second part, public participation. Is there anyone in the public that would like to say anything? Seeing none?
Can I, did you get back to me?
Oh.
Said not available tomorrow night, but absolutely no rush to approve the summer rates. P and R Commission had to review each year, make recommendations. Do important necessary, just minor changes from last year. Recover it next time.
Did you text them?
With no public participation, make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Who's, who's gonna, who's gonna do that now?
Not this side.
Vote.
Come on.
Kay's, Kay's for adjourned, seven, seven.
Should be Phyllis. Phyllis takes it over.
No.
It's that.